Good afternoon. I am Teresa Cornicum, the Civic Engagement Coordinator for the Bob Graham Center for Public Service at the University of Florida. On behalf of this center, I would like to welcome you to the League of Women Voters Alachua County Primary Candidate Forum. The Bob Graham Center for Public Service was founded with the purpose of engaging the community in the principles of citizenship. As a center, we are committed to offering the public opportunities to connect with the wider world around us. Additionally, the league and the center are committed to providing the community with nonpartisan and important information about our local elections and candidates. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters Alachua County for partnering with us on this event, which underscores the importance of citizen involvement in local elections. I would now like to introduce Diana Boxer, the co-chair of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters Alachua County.
Thank you, Teresa. Good afternoon to all of the viewers and welcome to our primary election candidate forum. As Teresa said, my name is Diana Boxer, and I'm co-chair of Voter Services for the local league. And along with co-chair Gwen Wagner and the League of Women Voters of Alachua County and the Graham Center, we would like to welcome you today. We appreciate your viewership and, of course, the participation of the candidates. This forum is open to the public, and an open forum such as this is the essence of democracy and the freedoms that we enjoy in the republic. I would just like to say that we will not be fact-checking any possibly inaccurate statements by the candidates, and nor have we afforded the candidates the opportunity to rebut possible factually inaccurate statements made by other candidates. This is a forum and not a debate. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes democracy through voter education and advocacy. We do not endorse candidates or political parties, but for more than 100 years, we have studied and supported state, local, and national issues. I remind you that no recording in any medium is allowed. No part of the video that we're recording today may be used in a political advertisement. The content of the forum is the property of the League of Women Voters of Alachua County and the Graham Center, which will record it and make it available to the public after the event. Post-forum viewing will be possible on the leagues and the Graham Center's YouTube channels and social media, as well as our websites. Gwen Wagner and I are the moderators for the panels today, with the help of Deborah Scheiman, our vice president, and Candy Birch, Voter Services member. We will introduce ourselves and explain the format of the panel, which participants have received in advance. All candidates have also received and agreed to the forum rules. They are the standard rules used by our league for virtual forums. Questions were prepared and selected by members of the league. Candidates who appear by name on the primary ballot, ballot for school board, Circuit Judge A, Group 12, City of Gainesville Commission, County Commission, and Mayor were invited to participate in today's forum. The views expressed in the forum today are those of the candidates and not of the league. Good afternoon and welcome back to the forum. Thank you for joining us for the second portion. I am League Vice President Deborah Scheiman, and I will be the moderator today for the Gainesville City Commission Panel. Welcome, panelists, and thank you for joining us today. Gainesville City Commissioners perform such duties as passing the city's budget, setting the mileage rate, and approving the ordinances and resolutions. The commission consists of seven members. Four commissioners are elected from single-member districts, and three commissioners, including the mayor, are elected at large. City commissioners serve a four-year term, and the person elected must continuously live in the district during the time in office. Only those residents who live in the district in which the candidate is running may vote for that seat. City commissioners are limited to two terms in office. There are four candidates in the race for District Two: Joe Beatty, Ed Book, James Ingle, and Michael Rayburn. There are three candidates in the race for District Three: Dejean Kane, Patrick Ingle, and Casey Willetts. There are two candidates in District Four: Brian Eastman and Christian Newman. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. Following the opening statements, I will read questions prepared by the League of Women Voters. Each candidate will have one minute to answer, and there will be four questions in total. I will rotate the order in which they respond alphabetically and by district. Candidates, a timer will be visible on your screen, so please keep an eye on it during your answers. An audible ding will sound when you have 15 seconds remaining, and at one minute when your time is over. If you do not stop speaking, we may have to mute your microphone. We will now begin with the candidates' opening statements. You each have one minute, and we will begin with the District Two candidates in alphabetical order. Starting with Joe Beatty, your opening statement, please.
In one minute, it is difficult to summarize why, after 15 years' involvement, I'm running for the District Two seat. Suffice to say, in past elections, I hoped voters would elect commissioners in the mold of Mac McKeachran, Gene Chalmers, and Gary Gordon, whose concerns were squarely on what was good for Gainesville. They kept debt and utility rates low, got out of bad contracts, and did not use GRU as a piggy bank. They sought balance between the needs of Gainesville and the university. A few past candidates, like Andy Orlando, experienced and successful, could have led us in better directions, but were subjected to smear campaigns and lost. People voted for their friends, associates, and club buddies with disregard for real qualifications and experience. At this time, Gainesville's commissioner with different leadership skills than we've had for many years, I've demonstrated those skills, commitment to public service ability, and citizen engagement. I offer the leadership we need now. I invite your support and vote. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Graham Center for hosting this event.
Thank you. Ed Book, your statement, please.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Ed Book, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I've lived in Gainesville since 1982, met my wife, a public school teacher here, and raised my family right in this community. I have served as a police officer for over 36 years and am currently the chief of police at Santa Fe College. So what do I believe in? Civility, treating everyone with professionalism, respect, and courtesy. I believe in budget accountability. That means no increases in fees and no utility transfer increases. The city should support core services such as outstanding parks and recreational space, excellent safe roadways and travel corridors, and support for public safety. And lastly, we need to help those most in need and impoverished. I will serve ethically and with integrity. I want to get things done. I promise to do an excellent job, and I will make you proud of your support.
Thank you. James Ingle, your statement, please.
Hey, thank you. My name is James Ingle. I am running for Gainesville City Commission because I am tired of seeing people here struggle. Gainesville is a great place to live, but it is a hard place to earn a living, and we need to change that. As president of the Local Electricians Union, I have seen firsthand what can be accomplished when people work together. And I've got real experience building local coalitions that have made real gains for working people here. My favorite example is we've got a wage theft ordinance we passed. That has put more than $100,000 back into the pockets of workers that were robbed by their employers. And we fought hard to stop discrimination in housing here in Gainesville, but together we can do more. We can hold UF and developers accountable to our community. We can make Gainesville finally live up to its potential. Gainesville's a great place to live, but we can all see where it needs to be better, and together I look forward to making that happen. My name is James Ingle, running for Gainesville City Commission, District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael Rayburn, your opening statement, please.
Hi there. I'm Michael Rayburn. My family moved to Florida in 1803. I grew up in Plant City and first moved to Gainesville in 1988, and then again in 2017 with my partner Amy and our five kids, two of whom are now graduates of Santa Fe and UF, so that's good. I have a PhD from Duke in Ethics and Public Policy. I'm the director of the GNV Bridge Community Center, pastor of the Gainesville Vineyard, and board chair of Grace Marketplace. I'm running for Gainesville City Commission District Two because I think our city is in real trouble. Runaway development is erasing our town and its neighborhoods. It's causing gentrification and making our affordable family housing crisis worse. Our city government needs stability, fiscal responsibility, and a serious commitment to our crumbling infrastructure. And most importantly, we need city commissioners who listen to our citizens, who take our concerns and ideas seriously, who solicit community input and operate with real and thorough transparency. The only way forward is together, as you're just...
Thank you. Your time is up. Appreciate it. We now are moving to the opening statements from District Three candidates, starting with Dejean Kane. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dejean Kane. One of the reasons I'm running for Gainesville City Commission District Three is because my ancestors are from here. My family has a lineage of history. We have so many issues going on in our city. We need someone that's truly local, that's from here, that cares about the needs of the people. Not only just care, but they listen, and we find strategies to fix it. Also, work with our other commissioners to make things right. So, August 23rd, vote for Mr. Kane for your next Gainesville City Commissioner, District Three, because it's like this. If you vote for Kane, we all will gain. We have so many significant problems in our city, but I believe that I've been anointed and appointed to meet those needs for our city and fight for everyone. Because I don't just serve District Three, but I serve the people of the city of Gainesville. Thank you once again.
Thank you. And now Patrick, your opening statement, please.
Hello, my name is Patrick Ingle. I am running for the City Commissioner for District Three. I am the businessman, an educator, a father, and a concerned citizen who will listen and have action. Better days are coming for the city of Gainesville. They'll be here when a new commission is sworn in. But it won't be here if you elect the commissioners that are willing to work together and respect each other, as well as the public. So ask for your vote, Patrick O'Ingle, on August 23rd for City Commissioner District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. And Casey Willetts, your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Casey Willetts, running for Gainesville District Three. I've worked at the University of Florida for seven years, most recently as a residency program coordinator. But who I am as a person is someone who has been engaged their whole adult life in the democratic process, whether it's bringing people to be involved as voters, as volunteers, or helping candidates, or most recently where I brought democracy to my workplace by starting United Campus Workers, a union for staff and adjuncts. That's really who I am. The issues I want to focus on in this race, particularly in District Three, is that we were slated, or at least prioritized in theory, to get a new neighborhood park because it's just sorely needed. But the city commission hasn't moved that forward. I support safety enhancements on our roads and streets so that all users are safe. Even in my district, we don't have complete sidewalks on Southwest 35th and on Southwest 20th. And initially, we don't talk a lot about, but GRU is the people's power. We need to keep it in the people's hands, not entertain these ideas that were set to invest around utility and lose our biggest asset, the people's power.
Thank you. Now, the District Four candidates will present their opening statements, starting with Brian Eastman. Your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Brian Eastman, and I'm a candidate for Gainesville City Commission District Four. And I'm running because I believe we need new voices in city leadership. We need leaders who are committed to our community, to making it greener, more equitable, and vibrant and affordable. And I'm the right person to do that because I have both the track record and the vision to move our community forward. I spent years overseeing and administering multimillion-dollar government programs to help our unemployed. I'm the vice chair for Grace Marketplace, our homeless shelter, and I have a track record of advocating for and making real progress for our residents and environment. Like in 2018, when Rick Scott tried to take oversight of GRU from us, I ran the successful campaign against it. I've run successful environmental initiatives like our anti-sprawl amendment, land protection initiatives, and clean water protections, all initiatives that were strongly supported by the league. So thank you all for everything you guys do. And these initiatives have been supported because of my approach, which is to really understand these issues, take the details seriously, and make sure that everyone is at the table to find metal ground to move us forward. So I'm very excited to be here with the league. Thank you, guys, for everything you do, and I look forward to talking about the future of Gainesville. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Christian Newman, your opening statement, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Christian Newman. I grew up in Gainesville, and this community invested in me. And I want to return that investment by serving as the city commissioner for District Four. I have the right experience to be an effective city commissioner, gained from being a kid, teacher, coach, business owner, father, renter, homeowner, and city plan board member here in Gainesville. I began my career teaching science with Teach for America in the Mississippi Delta to some of the poorest kids in the US. I came back and I taught at my alma mater, Eastside High School. And now I am a wildlife biologist, and for the last 20 years, I've been in the environmental field using my wildlife and business degrees from UF to protect the environment. I started multiple small environmental and technology businesses here in Gainesville. I work for a nonprofit where I lead renewable energy wildlife research. We need common sense, experienced leadership, and local government focused on serving Gainesville to make it stronger for everyone, to create a diverse and equal economy, empowering our citizens to help us make better decisions. Thank you so much, and I appreciate this opportunity.
And thank you. Thank you all candidates. Now we will ask you for your responses to the questions that we have prepared. The first question will begin with District Two candidates, which are Joe Beatty, Ed Book, James Ingle, and Michael Rayburn. Starting with Joe Beatty. For our first question, COVID has exposed long-existing health disparities in Gainesville, especially in the black community. What role does local government play in addressing this, and what solutions would you suggest?
I think that the long-existing health disparities are based on a lot of the longstanding disparities that occur. I'm sorry, this is distracting. I apologize. The disparities that are caused by the decisions that the commission has made that has kept the black community really down and hasn't allowed development over there, I think we need to address a lot of issues that affect all the people that are economically challenged in this community. And, you know, the government, really, the decisions that the commissions have been making over the years have done nothing to address the disparities on all fronts, the haves and have-nots.
Thank you. And now, Ed Book, your response to that same question.
Thank you. It's an excellent question. So local government is all about addressing inequalities, inequities between our different facets of our population, whether it's racial, economic, those in poverty, sexual orientation, and victimization. So what can we do? Local government's role is to seek aggressive funding streams and monies that will help provide better transportation to places like our Alachua County Health Department. You put transportation corridors on areas that all are those that are in poverty can get to. We have to work in partnership with the Education Alachua County School Board, who was on us just before me. And what can we do? We can provide access to facilities and recreational spaces for addressing both health facilities and educational facilities. Something else that's really very important is we have to make sure that everyone has access to the Health Department, and that means moving that around in portable transportation and vans and partnering with our local nonprofits. So thank you. Excellent question.
Thank you. James Ingle, your response to that question.
Thank you. That's a great question. So these health disparities come with a lot of other baggage, right? Like, anytime you've got this concentration of poverty in an area, it causes, just kind of complicates or causes all these other issues. So to get past those, we've got a great program that's been started in Gainesville, where we actually send some paramedics into neighborhoods that allow people to get some healthcare right in their neighborhood and not have to try and get to a doctor, not to try and make it anywhere else. Also, it starts to build that kind of relationship to where there's some trust. Because, you know, I can tell you, growing up for myself, a lot of people were just scared to go to a doctor. If they tell you you can't go to work, that hugely impacts you, and you've got to make these tough decisions. And being able to start looking at holistically, sending some people into the neighborhoods where those services are needed, has been very successful, and I would really like to see that expanded. Thank you for this question. It was excellent.
Thank you. Michael Rayburn, your response, please.
Yeah, thank you for asking this question. Can you see me? I can't see myself. Anyway, yeah, the GNV Bridge. There, can we start my timer over? Because I have to start my video now. Thank you. Hi, thanks for that question. Yeah, I am the director of the GNV Bridge Community Center. I'm sitting here in my office now in Lincoln State. So I appreciate this question. We provide groceries to over 1,000 people here in southeast Gainesville a month, which is important because this is a food desert. We run a literacy program, teaching kids to read, because the reading scores over here at Lincoln Middle and at Williams Elementary are incredibly, incredibly bad. We need wraparound services here, but first and foremost, we need to listen to the leaders and the members of the black community. We can't come in here and implementing programs, not hearing from them and letting them lead the way. And so this idea, we're going to bring in lots of programs before we've talked to the community, is not going to work. The members of the black community will tell us what they need, and then we have to do what they tell us to do. Thank you.
The same question now goes to the District Three candidates, who are Dejean Kane, Patrick Ingle, and Casey Willetts. Starting with Dejean Kane.
Well, you know, this is a great question. So first of all, in district or in the black community, when it comes to COVID, we need a place where all of our citizens can go and get healthcare, like a facility. We, for too long, have had to go to the other side of town just to get those services. We deserve better. One other thing they need to do is they need to listen to the people in the community. They need to work, and I commit to work with Desmond Duncan Walker, to bring these changes to our community. And you know, one of the things that we need to do for the black community, they got to be able to trust our healthcare system. So we need some type of education where we can let them know it's safe, it's okay, it's okay to try this, it's okay. We can give you what you need, but we have failed them because we have not listened to them. And far too long have they not gotten what they deserve. So what I say is, that's the way to reach them, and we need to do it now, and we need to do fast, just like we do it on any other side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Ingle.
Yep. There are so many disparities in healthcare in Gainesville because we are a racist country. Our public officials need to acknowledge that we are racist, so we work towards finding mutual solutions to our problem. One is to bring free community healthcare to our communities, and as well as education, so our people will not be afraid to go to the doctor or fear for having a healthcare bill, a medical bill that can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Casey Willetts, your answer to the question.
COVID exposed, you know, those disparities right here in this city. And some people's response to COVID was this cavalier suggestion that it was merely, you know, a personal safety issue as opposed to a public health issue, where we owed it to do things that would protect all of our community members. Our frontline workers were way more likely to have to work through the pandemic. They didn't have the benefit of working behind a computer from home. You know, getting the federal funds that we had or may have in the future to keep people in their homes when there was a real rental crisis, that helped. But information delivered at the communities from members of their communities about where to access, how to access, from people who are known in their communities, I think we weren't prepared for that. We perhaps aren't prepared for it now for the next healthcare emergency, or, you know, God forbid, pandemic. But the interest in being vaccinated was no lower in black communities here, or across the state, or across the nation. But completion rates, particularly early on, really, really struggled. And that says that we were not doing something to get the people interested to the medicine they were...
Thank you. And your time is up. Thank you very much. The candidates in District Four, Brian Eastman and Christian Newman, will now have the opportunity to answer the first question, starting with Brian Eastman.
Yes, again, thank you for the question. I agree with James Ingle. Our paramedicine program is a great program that needs to be expanded, but to, and to go further than that, I, you know, we know that health is connected to your surroundings and the environment that you're in, and poverty tends to impact much more than just your income. I think we need to ensure that we have high-speed internet directly in everyone's home. The digital disparities that we have in our community are something that impact our health outcomes. And we need to be investing in more neighborhood community centers. I was just at the opening of the Clarence R. Kelly Community Center just last week. Things like that help bring communities together and really do improve health outcomes. And we need to be making sure that we don't have food deserts. Much of our east side and various parts of our southwest have large areas where people cannot get access to healthy food. These are all things that our city has been working on, but I think we need to be working much faster and quickly to make sure that we're connecting those people to what they need and working on those health disparities.
Thank you. And Christian Newman, your response.
Yeah, thank you for this question. I think the answer is yes, the government does, our local government does have a role. And I think we have a responsibility to acknowledge, you know, the long-term sort of land use decisions that have been made to basically disenfranchise the east side of Gainesville, where many of our black citizens live. So, you know, most directly, we have to try to improve the economy and provide sort of more job opportunities for our folks over there. We also need to work on trying to drive and create, create it so that we've got medical facilities over on that side of town by partnering with UF, North Florida Regional Medical Hospital. But most of all, you know, I think we have to come back and we need to sort of talk to, engage with those communities and make sure that we are working with them to try to create the solutions that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. For the second question, we will begin with the District Three candidates, starting with Patrick Ingle. Gainesville has committed to 100% renewable energy by 2045. What policies would you propose or support to guarantee that deadline is met?
Okay, I very much support renewable energy. You know, my GRU, like to go, is low, $100 a month. That, I, the policy that was definitely reinforced would be to ensure that our residences are more energy efficient, as well as other ways of including possibly solar on rooftops, etc., a separate farm. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Willetts, your response.
So I support getting us to that goal, particularly incrementally. We know that it's coming, but we have to start now. With GRU, possibly be able to go into a power purchase agreement with a, you know, a large, large-ish solar facility. That's one of the steps that we have to take. We have to continue on that path. The energy efficiency upgrades through the LEED program or supporting other programs like community weatherization project, those are things we need to continue to do so that we just use less energy overall to help us get to our renewable energy goals. But one of the things that I don't think we can do is we cannot subsidize already well-off people to put solar on their homes just because they're the people who are most used to, you know, managing bureaucracy. They got the roof available, or they have the biggest roofs available. I can't, I don't think we can do that. That's not an effective use of our money. Other kind of community solar projects where people from all income ranges can get into that, can buy into that, that would be a better use than subsidizing already wealthy people to put solar on their roof.
Thank you. And Dejean Kane, your answer, please.
Yes, ma'am. So I do support it. I believe that we must continue in a direction that we're going to make sure everything is strong. I believe solar and those type of things in our communities, particularly educating on the east side of Gainesville as well, finding ways to help them reduce their bills and continuing this plan. But I think we're moving too slow, and I think thinking it's going to be done in 2045 is a long time. So we need to find a way to speed that up and also meet with the community. I think that's something we kind of missed a little bit, but meet with them, talk to them. And let's just look down that aisle and see what we have, and it's time for us to renew that and listen to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two now goes to the candidates in District Four, starting with Christian Newman.
Thank you for this question. I think it's really important to sort of understand that there's a tremendous amount of innovation going into renewables and to many things going into trying to help us sort of achieve these clean energy goals. And so we need to sort of be very strategic about how we sort of invest to achieve that by 2045. One of the things that we can be doing right now is investing in infrastructure to get ready for electrification. What does that mean? That means basically the future where everyone is going to be plugging in their cars and we're going to be getting rid of, getting rid of gas-powered vehicles. And that's going to require a significant effort that has a tremendous benefit, not only in terms of lowering the cost of energy, overall energy for consumers who no longer have to buy gas, but it also will significantly help in decarbonization. We are also very on the cusp of having battery storage as something that is a very viable thing within the community. And that also requires significant investment in terms of our infrastructure to be able to handle both solar and the intermittent aspects of renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brian Eastman, your response?
Yes, I absolutely agree that we need to be moving to 100% renewable energy. I have a daughter. I want to make sure that the, that I am handing her a planet that is not warming and that we've done everything in our power to make this work. We know from internal reports from GRU that we can begin to move up to at least 75% renewable energy by 2038 by simply doing targeted investments, doing identifying land for industrial-scale solar, investing in energy storage. I don't think we, we do not, and we should not have to wait for new innovations to come in. We know that under current technology, we can begin moving forward now. In 2031, our coal plant Deer Haven Two will be shutting down and with it 250 megawatts of power. And when that happens, we need to decide, are we going to be moving to net, are we going to be using fossil fuels? Are we going to be moving with renewable energy? And so I think we need to be working immediately to identify land, citing those solar installations and moving forward to getting us a more renewable grid.
Thank you. The candidates in District Two will now address question two, starting with Ed Book.
Yes, just like Mr. Eastman said, it's a good goal, it's environmentally friendly, and we should move to it. What we have to be very careful about is collateral negative impacts to those who are in poverty and may already have problems such as high energy costs. So that is something we have to address as we move to more energy-efficient policies. How do you do it? You have to strategically plan for reduced revenues by GRU over the next five to 10 to 15 years. Because the great irony here is as we move to renewable energies and they become more energy efficient, there will be less revenue for GRU to operate efficiently. So we should be doing that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Engel.
Hey, thank you. It's a great question. And this one's kind of right down my alley. I've been working in power generation for two decades. And you know, if you think about like, do we want to move towards renewable energy or do we want to move towards, you know, lower energy prices? Great news is like moving towards this renewable energy really kind of helps us. Right now, the prices have been going very high with GRU, almost entirely based on the amount of gas we're having to buy. So moving towards utility-grade solar that will give us some type of cushion against the rapidly changing prices of natural gas is good for the environment. It's good economically for customers of GRU. It's good all the way around. This is an easy policy decision to make. Utility-grade solar needs to be the direction we're going. And it is, as I said, this one's a, this one's a softball. I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael Rayburn, your response?
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I agree with, with, I think everyone's pretty much on the same page here. The technology is coming and we should make use of what we have now and what's coming. The thing I would add is that we have so many houses and apartments that are older, that are very energy inefficient. And we already have programs in the city to put new roofs on houses that need new roofs and new windows. And those programs are not being utilized. Those funds are not being spent as they need to be. So we also need to address, why is it that we are not upfitting our housing to be more energy efficient? Because that's going to be the missing component here if we don't increase the efficiency of our housing. That's, we're not going to be able to keep up with the, the switch to renewable energies. And we already have some of those programs in place and they're not being well-run. We need to address that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe Baby, your response?
Yes, this is very interesting question. I was in the room the day that aspirational goal was decided on by seven commissioners without, and I spoke to that at the time. It was an aspirational goal that they wanted. There was no robust community input. There was no talking about it. And so first of all, I, I disagree with this premise. I think that you can't just go forward with an aspirational goal. It has to be seen within the greater context of all the forces and unintended consequences that may come up. And when you make a policy decision, you really need to just do something more than what sounds good. If we were really concerned about that, we never would have gone to the biomass plant, which contrary to what Mr. Engel just said, the biomass plant is responsible and the debt that's been caused is what's responsible for the high cost of the utility stuff. So we need to cut the city budget.
Your time is up. And thank you. The candidates in question four will now have the first opportunity to address question three, starting with Brian Eastman. Describe your thoughts and how to best provide more affordable housing for those least able to afford a mortgage or rent, especially those making less than $30,000 per year.
Thank you so much for the question. This is something very personal to my heart. As I said, I'm the Vice Chair for Grace Marketplace, our homeless shelter. So I spent the last number of years working to try to get people off of the street and into homes. And of course, our, our homeless community is a very diverse community. There's people that are just working paycheck to paycheck and are being hurt by the rising cost of housing, as well as mental health, substance abuse, all kinds of different issues coming up. But no matter what issue someone has, the, the answer to them needs to first and foremost be to get them into a home, a safe place where they can sit down and they can figure out how to get back onto their feet. We are losing a lot of our affordable housing, both our market rate-low affordable housing, but also our public housing. We've lost things like Seminary Lane, a number of the housing units that were created under the Great Society that are now being shut down. I think that the city of Gainesville needs to get into the business. We cannot keep relying on the federal government or the state government to do the right thing here. We need to start getting in there and ensuring that we are actually building and preserving affordable housing so that we can get people on, off of the street and back onto their feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Newman, your answer?
Yeah, thank you so much. Affordable housing is a major challenge for Gainesville and many, many, many communities. And I agree that we need to be, having Gainesville be much more, the city government be much more directly involved in trying to address this by investing in affordable housing, partnering with, with community advocates to get affordable housing. But we also need to make sure that we're not, we're not sort of getting rid of affordable housing in, in, in place of just developing sort of new things. So we're losing many, many affordable places when we are redeveloping areas. And one issue that, you know, needs to be sort of discussed is the fact that we, we should not be getting rid of single-family zoning. That will have a significant potential sort of impacts to many of the neighbors and many of the people who need affordable housing right now. So we need to look at that and try to sort of address it in another way by engaging with our community, talking to neighborhoods who are going to be affected by these changes and making sure that we can demonstrate that those changes will actually result in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the candidates in District Two and starting with James Engel.
Thank you. It's a very important topic and I'm glad you guys brought this up. Historically, what we've done to encourage affordable housing here in Gainesville has been kind of benefits or incentives for developers to, to put something towards affordable housing. And I think we've gone about as far as incentives will do anything for us. There's a ton of development going on here. Hundreds of millions of dollars of new development going into Gainesville. And I think it is entirely reasonable to put requirements for affordable housing into that new development. You know, it's, it's done in many places. I think we've got options to do it here. It's a tool we're not using and I think can be used very much to move things in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you. Michael Rayburn, your answer?
Hi, thanks. First of all, I would insert that what we need is affordable family housing, not just affordable housing generically. We need to first work with local owners to preserve the existing stock of affordable housing that we have because tearing those down to build high-rises, high-rises are never affordable. We don't need more luxury student housing. And I'll also say I'm a member of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I didn't mention that before. And we had this past year, four proposals from affordable housing developers. There are corporations, nonprofits that specialize in affordable housing developments. And our job was to choose one proposal to submit for state lottery for state funding. The city was putting $0 into that. We could have taken, all four were really good, especially the top three. Were excellent proposals. All of them have been great for the city. The city has to put some skin in the game, invest our money in developing affordable housing that's designated as affordable housing. Thank you.
And Joe Baby, no response?
Yes, once again, many of the decisions that have been made by the, the commission and advocated by outside people like the renters' rights has really reduced the stock of affordable housing for families. I think we need to look at, you need to look at decisions holistically and we're not. Everybody keeps, the commission keeps talking about, we need more affordable housing. And the one thing, you know, there's affordability is not just the rent you pay, it's also your utility bill. And I read a lot of the emails, people are suffering in part because of the utility bills. And that is really part of the problem. Also, the housing stock, you know, has been said before, when you take down single-family the residences and you put up these multifamily, they makes a difference. The.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Your time is up. Ed Book, your response?
So Ms. Beatty touched on this problem. Affordable housing is really affordable living. And that's very important because high home and rental costs right now nationwide is exacerbating the problem. But I do support several affordable housing and affordable living solutions. First, homes and apartments that we build need to be energy efficient. And they must have energy-efficient appliances because that will reduce utility costs for those who are our poorest residents right now. Second, you have to have excellent mass transit because those in poverty also are those who don't have options to cars. Third, career education and careers such as that provided by Santa Fe College will allow those to earn a career and monies that will provide them the opportunity to afford housing. And lastly, we have to partner with our non-government partners such as Habitat for Humanity and our government partners like HUD to reduce costs for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Now the candidates in District Three will have the opportunity to address question three, starting with Casey Willits.
Thank you. So short of making the state government, you know, do the ethical thing of releasing the Sodowsky funds properly, the billions that they have taken away from Floridians, we have to get into the business of preserving housing, of building it. We're going to have to, someone said, skin in the game. We're going to put real dollars in the game at some point. Public funds are going to have to be used in a targeted way that we get the best bang for the buck to preserve housing, to perhaps to acquire it with incentives, not merely the incentives that have been discussed in the past, but some sort of requirement of affordable housing, of abundant housing, more of it, of different types in diverse places, diverse sizes of housing, because not everything is right, you know. Part of that affordability someone mentioned is I personally don't want to buy a lawnmower or, or, you know, pay someone to buy a lawn. I need to play, have a shared responsibility for lawn, for roof, for all those kinds. We need diverse housing. We're a diverse community. About a million things we could talk about, but we need real public housing and spending some real, you know, public dollars on it.
Thank you. Dejean Kane, your answer?
As the Chair of the Elotra kind of affordable housing, I've been the Chair for 10 years. I've seen a lot going in our community with this affordable housing. And the first thing we need to do, I believe we need to talk to those that are in the affordable housing. We need to find out what their needs are. The second thing that we need to do, we need to make sure that we are not making policies that will hurt our community, such as putting, you know, making potholes and things for affordable housing where they, the people that live there can't do what they need to do. So we got to make sure that we don't do things to hurt them, but to help them. And we need to continue working with our local officials. But affordable housing is very important in our community and we can't push it to the wayside. And we can't let other companies come in and destroy what we have in our neighborhoods. We must preserve those things that are in our neighborhoods that have been here for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And Patrick Engel, your response?
Yeah, in addition to what Mr. Book has stated about affordable living, we also need to stop the, it's the sprawl of luxury student houses. And while Gainesville is not an eligible area for the US Department of Agriculture for 100% interest loans to low income, in the city, we should adapt or create a program to help our low-income residents making less than $30,000 a year with this program similar that the federal, this department agriculture has. Thank you.
Thank you. For our fourth and final question, we will begin with the District Two candidates, starting with Michael Rayburn. Civic improvement projects such as the Greenway Loop, Bolton Center renovations, and the East Gainesville Sports Complex have been proposed. Are these types of projects worthy in your view and how would you propose to fund them?
Yeah, they're certainly worthy. And I would like to see them come to pass. But we have more pressing needs right now. Our fire department training facility is on the verge of being condemned. The fire department has several other fire stations with sewage backing up in the toilets, roofs leaking and disrepair. And then their fire station at Arsha Road is a trailer park, is a mobile home that's been converted into a fire station. Our police department is underfunded. All of our first responders are underpaid. Our infrastructure is crumbling. Our transit system needs serious money. I don't know how we do all of that at the same time. We need a lot of fiscal responsibility and we might need to raise some of this and get other organizations to help us because the city's first priority has to be spending on critical needs and its infrastructure.
Thank you. Joe Baby, your answer?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Rayburn for his answer. That would be part of my answer. So he saved me a little bit of time on that. I certainly think, I'm not familiar at this moment, to be honest, about the, the status of the Bolton Center renovation. I would assume that there'd be some Wild Spaces funds available for that instead of some of the other projects that they're doing. As far as the East Gainesville Sports Complex goes, I think that, that this is not the time, for all the reasons that Mr. Rayburn just said. I have some creative ideas and some ways that I think we can meet the needs of the fire department and some of the other things. But wasting money on a consultant to study this was an ill-conceived idea. And I think that we shouldn't be going forward with anything new now.
Thank you. Ed Book, your response?
So first, I support an East Gainesville Sports Complex, which is a little bit different from some of the other candidates. However, the Bolton Center, as Ms. Beatty said, is likely to be funded via Wild Spaces Public Places. So we can kind of take that off, off the idea. So how do you do it? You have to find funding streams that deal with non-duplicative recreational services. So if you bring soccer fields there, like Commissioner Chestnut has proposed, those are potentially revenue generators that will offset some of the costs of what we have there already. And that will make that a regional destination. Now, why is that important? Yes, fire and infrastructure is critical. Yes, our police is absolutely essential. But why it's absolutely essential here is because this supports our East Gainesville residents, those in poverty. It brings activity. It addresses food insecurity and it brings. It addresses food insecurity and it brings recreational space to the region. So I support the sports complex and I think there are other supports for the Bolton Center that will still be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. And James Engel, your answer?
Yes, so, um, yes, I think these are worthy projects. The, the funding for different projects will come from different places. Like I said, there's some, some Wild Spaces Public Places money. There's a lot of American Rescue Act money coming in. I expect to see the same when we look at some of our infrastructure needs. There's a lot of funding out there in different directions that we've got access to for different projects. One of them that I think we overlook a lot here is, you know, like several people have said, our, our infrastructure is very stressed. The reason our infrastructure and our fire departments and those services are stressed is because we are having a ton of development in town that is not paying their fair share to update these services that are going to be necessitated because of that development. So I think making sure that these developers are paying their fair share to town, taking advantage of federal funds for non-recurring costs and using our Wild Spaces Public Places money will cover a lot of these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The same question now goes to the candidates in District Three, starting with Casey Willetts.
So I like this question because let's talk about one of my main campaign issues. And that's the fact that in District Three, there is only one neighborhood park. In the master 2020 plan, they prioritize it, or at least they identified it as where they really actually need a brand new park. And it has not been prioritized. It has not been fought for. It has not been secured. They haven't bought the land. They haven't budgeted the land. The, these civic improvement projects, I'm sure they're all worthy, but how we're going to fund them, the use of Wild Space and Public Places funds. I, I, I have trouble, I have trouble putting these together that my district has gotten the short end of the stick when it comes to parks. We're, we're a diverse district. We got working class people. We have families. We have students and all of those people deserve access to great public and Wild Spaces. Wild Spaces we do pretty good on, but not on public parks. And so the funding of these, there are those different streams. Like I said, the Bolton Center is probably, you know, gonna come from the public places portion of that. And I do support that overall. I hope we do, hope to extend it this fall.
Thank you. Dejean Kane, your response?
So first of all, I asked the question, how long will East Gainesville have to wait to get some real development? And under the administration, if I'm on the commission, it won't be long. I think it's important that we understand, yes, we have crumbling buildings. We have crumbling infrastructures. And this stuff has been going on for a long time. But my vote is saying that we're doing the right thing with the sports complex. It's saying that we need to be at the front of the list. I believe that the people in District One in East Gainesville wants to see real development and this is the only way we can get it. So I vote for it. They're sitting there, they're watching the commissioners and they see that they don't have hope. But there is hope on the east side of Gainesville. And we need to take these things and we need to do it quickly. Yes, we'll take care of the police. We'll take care of the fire. But we've been sitting down and we've been overlooked. And we'll take money from public places. We'll take money from some of the funds that our wonderful president has given us and we will do what's right. And we will put it toward the right efforts to rebuild East Gainesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Engel, your answer?
Okay, I do support the sports complex and a Bolton Center because they are revenue generating capital projects which can be funded through the development municipal bonds and not through raised taxes. I do not support the funding of these projects through tax increases, but for bonds. As for, and the other funding, we need to redirect for the fire department and the police to improve their infrastructure and their building because their buildings are condemned. And also to bring, make sure they're at the cable, permanency of the cable. So they can provide the Bible expertise, input and advice for the city commissioners. We are not experts. We are the legislative body. We need the experts of the community included. Thank you.
Thank you. The candidates in District Four will now have the opportunity to address a final question, starting with Christian Newman.
Thank you so much. So a lot of really good points have been brought up, but I'm actually gonna make this personal. This, this, the East Gainesville Sports Complex is, is in District Four and I've grown up going to Citizens Field my whole life. And I can tell you, it is absolutely critical that we reinvest in that part of town. And it's absolutely, it's absolutely critical that we reinvest in that infrastructure. Citizens Field is, to be honest, is, is an embarrassment. I was a coach last, for the last couple of years, coaching east side girls soccer and it's just that facility is just not, not good. We have out of town football, things coming. It's a major hub for the community, that community there as well as gain its fail. And it's just, it's just really needs to be improved. And also going to some of the other comments, we've had so much investment in recreational facilities going west, we have not been investing in those things on the, on the east side of town or even in the center of town. And that needs to happen because essentially facilities that we have for our kids and for our community is, is, needs, needs attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian Eastman, your response?
Thank you. Yes, great question. And some of these are personal to me as well. I, I was on the Charter Review Commission and ran the Charter Amendment to pass the Hogtown Creek Greenway Pedestrian Bicycle Trail. I'd love to see that through, but also on a personal level, I've seen firsthand how quality places can reinvigorate neighborhoods. In my neighborhood in Oakview, we had Wild Spaces Public Places Funds that went toward improving our park, which is previously sort of a bunch of trees, some swings that had gone in there. They'd been proved and it's really brought the community together and brought our, all of our housing values up, really made the neighborhood a much better place to be. And I think that is what people expect from their city government. That's why we have city governments so that we can pool resources and create shared spaces where we can come together. How we fund this, as other people said, there's multiple ways, Wild Spaces Public Places, there's CRA funds that can go into it. We also have many, many billions of dollars in federal funds. I wrote an article in the Gainesville Sun last year outlining some of the opportunities that we have for federal funds on some of these bicycle pedestrian trails and parks. We have ways of funding it and I think our citizens expect.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your patience and bearing with us. This has been a long one. Thank you to the candidates for your participation this afternoon. We appreciate your time and your thoughtful answers to the questions. The League will offer you, the candidates, another opportunity to connect with voters through our digital voter guide that's coming soon. Vote 411. So candidates, please look for an invitation in your inbox tomorrow. Thank you also to your viewer, to the viewers for your participation today, all 350 of you. This concludes the League of Women Voters of Alachua County and Bob Graham Center for Public Service 2022 Primary Election Candidate Forum. Post-Forum viewing will be available on our League and Graham Center YouTube channels. We plan to have a October 11th candidate forum for the regular election. Details about that are to come. So please join us for that. And remember to vote before August 23rd or on August 23rd. Your vote is your voice. Thank you all.